One else, I hope you've had a great day so far and I'm looking forward to some fun and engaging conversations.
Absolutely. Thank you. And just so that you all will know the flow of the evening, we will just really hear from you all. A few of you all submitted questions early on when we first announced that we'd have student town halls. So we'll share one or two questions with you all and then we'll just jump in to hear from students who are here in the audience. And so what you'll see throughout the chat is a link where if you want to sign up to come to the mic, you can fill out the form. And so once you fill that out, we will call you to the front or to the mic, so to speak. Coming to the mic is simply unmuting your microphone and then speaking out. And then Mrs. Atkins or some of our other special guests who I'll share who's here on the call, we will attempt to answer your questions. So we'll go through a round of that. Hopefully we'll get through most of the questions that are here and that's really it for the evening. What I will say, as I mentioned, some special guests earlier, we have some very, some amazing school leaders just in our, within our district. And so I know that we have Mark Tyler here. He is the principal for Verona Elementary School. Mark, if you're here, you're more than welcome to come off of, you know, to come on the video and give away. But his, the mascot is the Hawks there and their motto is never stop growing and to be the change. So Mark, thank you for being here. We also have Liz Parker, who is the director of school counseling. So good to see you, Liz. When you think of all of the amazing SEL, our counseling staff and all of the support that we get when we're putting our arms around our students and students in our schools, that's Liz's department. And so Liz, we're glad to have you. Yes. And then also this evening, we'll have Dr. Ken White with Highland Springs High School, representing Springer Nation. And so Dr. White, if you're here, you're more than welcome to come off of video and to speak as well. So before we jump in, just a few bits of housekeeping and thank you all. I think we, I think we've been doing it for a while. So everyone knows to mute your phones if you're not talking so that we can clearly hear the person who's speaking. As I mentioned earlier, there's also a, there's a signup sheet in the chat. And so if you would like to come to the mic and ask a question or even just share a comment about your perspective about virtual learning or things that are on your mind, you're more than welcome to sign in and we'll use that to go through order. We are recording this evening as well. So while I would love to see your faces on video, if you don't want to be recorded, just to keep that in mind because we will, we will be recording the, recording the conversation. All right. For housekeeping, Mrs. Atkins, if you are ready, we'll jump into Q and A. Actually, first, I think you had a few comments that you wanted to share. Do you want to share those before we jump into, into Q and A?
I do and I will just dive right on in. I'm so excited to see every one of you. I want to kind of jump in the screen just like that, but of course I just hit my head. So what sense does that make? So I'll get as close as I can. I wanted to share just a few things with you. As reminders, students, the Henrico County libraries in our district are open. That's Verona area library and Sandston area library. Know that they are open and available to you whether you need to use computers or if you want to check out a book. Just want to make sure that you check the hours so that when you go, they are indeed open. Also, for those students that will be learning from home, know that your parents pay an energy bill. And there's a chance that that bill might just go up. So I wanted to give you some tips that you can help your families with their energy bill. And so for all the parents that also are with you and listening, know that you can get these tips from the Dominion Energy website. And there's a fabulous list of energy saving tips. So Mrs. Atkins, what are those tips? Let me share them with you. So the first one is truly, if you're not watching the TV, turn it off. That's the easiest way that you can save your parents' money on their energy bill. Number two, you know, when your electronic device starts to die and the battery is low and you plug it up to the charger. Once it's fully charged and you take the device off the charger, guess what? Your energy cycle is still flowing, still costing your parents' money. Be sure to unplug that charger so that you won't add to those costs. And the last bit of advice, when you're in your room or perhaps in your living room, check out the vents. Make sure they're not covered because if they are, then there's a chance that you are running your machines harder than what they need to. And that also spikes up costs for your family. So I wanted to share a few things that you can do to help your family save money. Yay. All right. I'll go on to the next thing. I don't know if you've seen these one recently, but I have. And I just wanted to remind you to wear your mask. Please, please, please. Wear a mask, students. If you are not comfortable with the way that a mask feel on your face, please share that because there are all different types from cotton to the general purpose used mask. And also share with your friends and family members to wear a mask when they're in the public. And it's good every now and then, even if you're in your home, to put one on to become familiar with what it feels like. Wear a mask, Henrico. Man, I got a whole pile of things here. So if we have any juniors or seniors on this line, I know you've heard this. This is a huge poster, but I think it's valid in being large. If you are driving more, and I'm going to move myself so that you can see this. I know that there will be many of our teens driving to the grab and go hubs to pick up meals. You may be driving to help your family out. You may just be driving to grab those good old fries from McDonald's or Chick-fil-A. Wherever you go, please don't text and drive. We love you way too much to learn of you getting in some sort of accident or harm because you were texting and driving. Yes, I am being Mama Bear right now. So know that if you text and drive, you are 23 times more likely to be in a crash. Yes, that sounds horrific, but it needed to be said. All right. I'll leave that one alone. So those that are driving, please don't text and drive. And if you're wondering, hey, Ms. Atkins, I thought you was a schoolboy rep and we're going to talk to you about schedules. Yeah, you are. But Ms. Atkins is going to share so much more. Now, for the parents that are around you, I know you've heard me talk about wearing headphones. As a mom, I prefer the muffs versus the ones that you can push down in the eardrums because there is a chance to damage the ear. Well, I received some information from a company called Here2Here and they sent me a bag and I fell so in love with the picture on it because I thought it was appropriate for the message that I am about to share. Do you see that image on there? I thought it was way cool. Lower it or lose it. It's real. If you have your headphones on and someone can hear your conversation from down the hall or across the room, there's a chance that it might be too loud. You only have two eardrums. And when sound is too loud in our eardrums, there's a chance that it could be damaged. Okay? And there's a chance that if you don't lower it, it being the volume, there's a chance for you to lose it. So just be mindful, students, of the volume in your headphones. Almost done, if you're wondering. Last but not least, students, young kindergarten, all the way to seniors, if you need help, ask someone you trust for help. Whether you are LGBTQ Partner Abuse Hotline, they are there for you. Also, the Virginia Family Violence Hotline, if you need that, they are available for you. You are not alone. Never, never, never alone. Okay? So and always 911 as well. And let's say you don't know these numbers. You don't know 911. If there's a loving, trusting person in your home, just let them know and they'll try to get you the help you need. And this last one is for the family member that are around you, but not on that screen that can clearly hear me. We do have, uh oh, flip it. We do have a learning plan as well as a health plan. The digital copies of these are on the Henrico County Public Schools website. Right there. I am encouraging families, if you can, to download it. It's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. What is in this booklet is gold. If you want to know plans, not just of what your child day looks like, but middle, high, et cetera, it's in here or on the digital copy. If you want to know what happens when someone tests positive for COVID, check out this plan and become knowledgeable. All right, guys. That was Mama Bear and that's all she's going to give you for right now. And now I'll flip into school board member mode. I am so excited to talk to you and hear your questions. Let's get it.
All right. Mrs. Atkins, I always appreciate, appreciate your enthusiasm. You are such a wealth of information and resources. So thank you for starting us off in that way and sharing. I learned a bit from listening to you too. So thank you for sharing all of that. So we'll, we'll jump in. There were, there were quite a few questions that came in from Verona. We'll just share two, but then we'll have time for individuals who are here in the audience to share. And so one of the questions that came in from the Verona district was, well, being late on virtual learning calls a tardy on attendance. And this came from a student at Elko.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for your question. I will also, once I give my response, open the floor up to administrators that are on the call. Let's Go Hawks over at Verona Elementary School. And you know Springer Nation is on the line, Dr. White. So either one of you, after I give my response, feel comfortable chiming in. I don't know if Dr. Cashwell has joined, but if she is joined, I feel comfortable sharing whatever comments after I provide mine. So let's talk about tardiness. When you're in the school building and you're tardy, you get that slip, right? Let me see head nods, right? Now, we're learning virtually. That's just not going to work. So attendance is going to be taken by effort. So you have to show effort. And so two words that have been used, have been used quite often is synchronous and asynchronous. So synchronous means that you are in front of your computer live in front of your teacher receiving instruction. If the teacher sees you and sees that you are actively participating in your assignments, you are present. Check mark. Now asynchronous, that means that let's say something happened. You tried to get online, but it is not working. There is something that's happened that does not allow the teacher to see you during that instruction time. You have an opportunity to be marked present as well. You have to complete the assignment that that teacher or whoever individual is providing the instruction to you, you have to complete that assignment by that deadline. That's key. So if, if the teacher says you have an assignment and they posted it on Monday and you completed on Friday, nope, 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 that's not going to work. So I hope that answers your attendance question. And I'll open the floor to other administrators to share their thoughts as well.
Well, good evening. I'll go ahead and chime in. This is Dr. White here. Ms. Atkins hit it right on the head. Our goal is to be as flexible as, as possible with you all when it comes to virtual learning. So you will have opportunities for meaningful interaction and meaningful contact. And that gives us the opportunity on the teacher side to be able to be as flexible as possible. So as it was stated, if there's a deadline that we have, you have until that time to be able to get an assignment done. At Highland Springs, which is going to be very similar to what you see at other schools, all of our kids will have a bell ringer or a warm-up every time you go into a virtual class. So you get the opportunity to be able to complete that bell ringer or that warm-up until midnight. And then if you complete that, then you will be able to get credit for being present in class.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you all both.
Background's up as we go throughout the meeting as well. So I'm testing on a couple of different things. So I just want to throw it out there so you don't alarmed.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you all both for, for that insight. I think one thing that's so helpful, when we started the student town halls, we didn't have a lot of the answers, right? We were really figuring it out. But I feel as though we've come a few, we've come a long way even over the last two weeks. So hopefully we're able to answer more. So we'll do one more question that was sent in earlier and then we'll go to our live audience. Someone asked about, is there a way for a lesson to be recorded and stored for students to refer back to? If a class is missed or to get clarity during the school day? So any input about recorded lessons and students being able to refer back to them?
Yes, it is my understanding that lesson plans are happening right now as teachers think about what it is and how they're going to make sure they're enthusiastic about the instruction that they're going to have with each of you. They are also going to be recording those lessons so that in the example that Dr. White articulated and shared, if there's a chance where perhaps you missed, you know, the class or the internet's gone down, you will be able to go back and perhaps look at that recorded lesson to get that instruction and also to receive present for attendance. Mr. Tyler, I think I heard, I'm pretty sure, yeah, I saw your, your initials pop up. So Mr. Tyler, I'd love to hear your voice. As I was a former PTA president for Verona and Bayford Elementary, I miss it so, so much. And I'm excited to hear Mr. Tyler's voice. Mr. Tyler, do you have any insight into that you would like to share?
Absolutely. And thank you for having me. Coming from the perspective of the elementary school, lessons will be recorded and specifically when it's direct instruction. And really for the direct instruction is not only for students, but also parents. Because I've had many parents say to me, I'm teaching this how I learned when I was growing up and it's so different than how it's being taught now. Now we have the recording so both parents and families can be on the same page as students. So we will have those recordings available and I think it's going to be a great support for, for students and, and, and moms, dads, grandma, grandparents, everyone who's going to help you in the household. It's a team effort.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you all both again. And I'm hopeful that that was, that was insightful. So you all, we are going to go to some of our audience questions. A few of you all have started to sign up. Thank you. I do want to reiterate, all questions are welcome. All comments are welcome as well. And so what I'll do is I'll share the names in, in a series of three. So I'll share three names so that you can prepare to get to the mic. If I mispronounce your name, please correct me so that I can say it properly. And so the first three speakers that we have is Zanun Nassim. Then we have Kishanti, followed by Kanaya. So Zanun, Kishanti and Kanaya. So Zanun, if you can unmute your microphone and share with us your question or comment. Zanun Nassim, are you still here?
And you may have to unmute your mic.
Okay. And I don't see him in our participant list. So what we'll do, we'll keep going. And Zanun, if you are here and if you, if you, you know, want to ask your question again, just sign up. And so next we have Kishanti. Kishanti, I see you on the screen. What's your question or comment?
Hi, everyone. I'm Kishanti Barmo. I'm representing Henrico Justice as a member. And so my question isn't specifically about the scheduling of the school year, but it is tackling the redistricting, the redistricting plan. So I wanted to start off by saying that I researched the redistricting plan and two of the schools stuck out to me because their student population will be affected by the plan. To start out, I want to get into Glen Allen High School because the information that was given stated that the easternmost neighborhoods will be removed from that zone. And so they would be placed into the Hermitage school zone. So I just wanted to say that both options include that decision. And so that would affect the multifariousness of the schools. And so a lot of times we see in Western schools that the schools are about two to three minutes away, but they exemplify different economic and diversity factors within each school. So I just wanted to ask you to review that, that, you know, statement that I made. And also with that, Henrico Justice has a demand. And basically that demand is that the school board reviews this, you know, statement and also exemplifies the same diversity profile within each school as closely as possible. And we would like to ask if you guys would like to meet, the school board would like to meet with our group.
And I'm just writing these things down because I want to get it right. So give me a moment.
While she's writing, I just want to say thank you, Kishanti, for being present. I think Henrico Justice has been here at every single town hall. And you all have been so thorough and thoughtful with the comments that you share. So thank you for coming here and showing up and being so prepared this evening.
Thank you.
And so Kishanti, I'm excited to have this conversation with you. Number one around redistricting, absolutely will consider what you've shared. My colleagues will be more versed in their districts regarding Hermitage, but make no mistake about it, that Ms. Atkins has her eye on it and that will be deeply engaged in conversations around redistricting and the impacts specifically around equity and diversity. So know that I will be having those conversations once redistricting gets back on the agenda for us to look at and make decisions and eventually vote on. The other piece around that is around diversity within our schools. Just, I believe last week, my days sort of get intermingled when we had our school board meeting. I was so proud because Dr. Cashwell, our superintendent, has added equity, not just a position to add to Henrico County, but to infuse it through all that we do. From the hiring to the students that enter our buildings, because equity doesn't start with a position, it's a culture. And so I will share with you that I am looking forward to great things when it comes to diversifying our students as well as our staff and creating a culture of inclusiveness, which is what that is a vision. So for me, creating a culture of inclusiveness is a vision. And these goals, once achieved, will get us there, right? It's almost like the phrase that says, you know, when you chase excellence, success then comes. It's a little bit similar to that. When we chase that vision of inclusiveness tied with some goals and actions, eventually we'll get to that vision. So that's to address your diversity statement. And then your last question. Oh my goodness. Will I be willing to meet with Henrico Justice? Let me share that I have. And I will continue. I know we had the march a little ways ago. And so just know that when I'm out there, I don't look like this. I might have on my Black Panther Wakanda shirt and jeans. I might have on a floral dress. So Ms. Atkins, when she is out and about or meeting with some of these groups, whether it's Henrico Justice or Students for a Change, I'm comfortable when I'm there. And so if you see me at one of your events, whether it was your march, please come wave at me. And now that I see your face, I'm staring at your block because I want to make sure that I can remember who you are and match your name to your face. It is an honor and a delight. And I am so incredibly proud of you and all of the students for trying to make people like me better. I value that.
Thank you.
Oh, you're my pleasure, sweetheart. Did I answer all your questions?
Yes, ma'am. I related information to the other students, but thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. What's next?
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you both for that. And Kishanti, I think we have a meeting scheduled for Friday. So I'll be talking to you on Friday. All right. So next up, we have Kanaya. Kanaya, if you will, okay, there you are.
Hi, my name is Kanaya Gerlinger and I'm not really representing anybody, but I do go to Cuyahoga Middle School. Also, I hope y'all had a good day. You know, it's, I'm trying to be positive. I was wondering, are we going to be sent packets? Like if we're going to have packets of work and they're going to send it to us in mail?
That's an excellent question. I think that's a question better suited for our principals or teachers because once we get into nitty gritty details, Ms. Atkins may not know that information because I am very high level. My understanding is that either maybe at an open house or a drive-by that you will receive possibly supplies and possibly packets. But I want to validate that. So if we do have teachers or either principal that could talk about that, that would be wonderful. If we do not, what I will do is I will find that information out and make sure I get it to you.
I'm sorry, I do look too comfortable. I'm sorry. I'm just long day.
As you should be. You're 6:30. You're fine. You're fine. So principals, if you all are able to speak to any potential packets that may be coming out in your school communities or what you even know, you know, what we're doing as a district.
So this is Mark Tyler from Bryan Elementary. And again, I'm speaking from the elementary point of view. Packages will be available for students. It won't be the first week of school because we, the packets, the purpose of the packets will be for review. And we still, we still need to get some, some instruction in, but it will be available to families. And what we're looking at is, is one, finding out who is interested in receiving that. So we'll check with parents and then we'll make it available so they can drive through the school and pick it up in a non-contact way. We want to make sure that we're, we're meeting the needs of all our students. And again, this is just another way. If we find that some families aren't able to come to school, we'll, we'll work with those families. Whether we put it in the mail or we might even deliver to the house, whatever we need to do to, to support the students. But that is something that elementary is doing is providing those learning packets. As far as high school and middle school, I think Mr. White can probably address that.
Yeah, I'll chime in here. Our goal is to be sure that our young people have what they need. So if you have a need, we want to be sure that we're able to meet that. If you reach out to your principal or any of the administrators or your school counselor and just make them aware of what you need as far as a packet, they will be sure to be able to provide it for you. I think that kind of goes to a bigger purpose though. And the biggest piece with virtual learning is for all of our students. If you have a need, you have to advocate for your needs. So we understand that virtual learning is tough. We understand that we are, you know, doing something completely different than what we have traditionally done with education. And if you have a need, reach out to us because we're here and you know, our people, our teachers, our staff, they've been excited for you all to come back to school since we left school in March. So we need to be sure that we are having you all's back and we're here to support you guys. So if you, if you have anything you need, please reach out to us and let us know so we can help.
The only thing I'm probably going to be having trouble with is waking up early. So I don't think I can fix that.
Kanaya, start this week. Start practicing this.
I already did last week. It went terrible.
Well, let me say, we, it's, it's a process. You're not alone in that. Let me say that. I'm, I'm starting this week too. So just keep it up. Thank you for being here. I think Dr. White had very good advice around anyone who's on the call. This is a time when we really have to hear from you. We don't see your faces. You're not in class to raise your hands. And so being involved in these types of events, sending the email, making the phone call will really help us to streamline our process. So thank you.
Thank you for answering my questions. I hope you have a beautiful evening.
You too. You too. All right. So next up, I will share the next three names. But I'll also say, if you are here and you have a question or comment and if you've not signed up, take a look in the chat. Fill out, put, you know, insert your name in the link and then we'll be circling around to you. So thank you for those who have signed up and we'll keep on down the list. The next three we have is Eshan, followed by Docsh, followed by Glory. So those are our next three speakers. And Eshan, if you're here, we will start with you.
Is there going to be a way that the way we submit our work changes?
Okay. And so, and so you're, and thank you for your question. And so you're asking how you will submit your work for your classes?
Yeah. And is it going to change?
Okay. And you're saying, will it change from what you did, say prior to at the end of last school year or just in general?
Like what, like changed, like with the end of last school year?
Okay, okay. Thank you for your question.
Eshan, thank you so much for participating and for your question. It is my understanding and example would be homework where in the past you would where in the past you would upload, maybe you took a picture of it and then you uploaded it. Your teacher received it, downloaded it, reviewed it, and possibly put their responses in the comment section. I do have fantastic news that we received an upgraded app in Schoology that allows an easier way for teachers to provide comments directly on your document. That's something that I heard from teachers. I heard it from my own daughter who attends Highland Springs High School. She said, Mom, I turned my assignment in and then I got feedback, but it wasn't on the document, so I'm not sure what she's talking about. And so I'm so pleased to share with you. The process hasn't necessarily changed. You'll be familiar with it, but there are enhancements to make your experience better. Also, it's key to understanding, what's key to understand is once you begin classes with your teacher, be patient with your teacher. Because we all, you're going to be learning right along with your teacher. You're going to be learning right along with your peers. And it's okay if you don't know how. All right? You're welcome. Thank you for your question.
Have a good evening.
You have a wonderful evening as well.
I just appreciate the thoughtfulness, right? And just thinking ahead and wanting to be prepared. So I just appreciate that. Thank you for your, for your question. Next up, we have Docx. Docx, if you're here, if you will unmute your mic and share your question or comment.
Hello, my name's Docx Patel. I'm going to go to Freeman High School next year as a freshman. And my question was, in eighth grade, we would have like a Google account. And I'm pretty sure I'm supposed to go to pick up my laptop tomorrow. So like, are they going to give us a Google account or how are we supposed to work?
It's my understanding, so you are going to pick, you're an eighth grader. So did you not receive a laptop in seventh grade? Or are you going to get your camera turned on?
No, I'm going to get my laptop picked up tomorrow.
Okay, fantastic. When you go to pick up your laptop, ask that question. They should provide you with answers to regarding whether your Google account, how to use it, et cetera. So I would advise you to just ask that question because I don't know the answer to that one for you. And I want to make sure I steer you in the right direction. The other piece is, once they provide that information to you and you get home and you open it up and you begin to work on it and you find something's not working. Or when they set up your Gmail account, I'm under the impression that they're still giving those out. I haven't heard anything differently. So once you do receive that, if for some reason it's not working, please call the hotline. We have a IT hub hotline that you can call to get that resolved so that you don't have to get ready on September 8th. You'll already be ready. So take advantage of some of the tools like that phone number. And if you call and they ask you that they need to see your device in person or they can't fix it, you can also go to the hubs. Now, I know you're at Freeman, but in the Verona District, Highland Springs is a hub. So you'll need to find out which hub, and you can find that out on our Henrico County Public Schools website. But it's critical that you get that device. And I'm so glad that you are picking it up on tomorrow. Was that helpful?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Have a great evening.
And others may have a response as well. So I'll open the floor if others can answer that question, too.
I could answer that question since I'm in his district. I'm, I'm going to be joining him in Freeman or Tucker. I'm in eighth grade. Freeman is a hub, and I think Hermitage is a hub. So if you want to go to anyone there, the people are really nice. They're really nice. They're very kind. I broke my computer on accident. They're like, it's fine, it's fine. Somebody punched his computer just for fun. So I was like, oh, that's not me. But yeah, those two are the two choices I would pick. That's most definitely. I just wanted to say that because I understand his pain.
And you know what? It's going to take all of us participating in this process. As I said before, on the first day of school and you log in and your teacher may, may not know a piece of technology as well, it may be a student that does. And it's going to take us doing exactly what you did, Kanaya, to work together to move us forward. So kudos for jumping in. Thank you.
And if I may, all of Henrico County Public School students have Henrico County accounts. So when you log into your laptop and then you also go to Clever, Clever is like your one stop shop for all of your apps and software pieces that you have on your laptop. So you will be able to access anything through Schoology, anything through Google. That information will be there for you. And Kanaya, is it that I pronounced your name right there? You're absolutely correct with Hermitage and Freeman being your zones. And you also have, I believe, Deep Run is a hub as well. So you have those three on that side in Verona, in the Verona District. We at Highland Springs will serve as the other tech hub. So you can always get help as needed. And if, if I'm able to, I can drop the email address for the tech hub information into the chat and also the number as well, so that way you have access to it if you need it.
Fantastic.
Thank you all for being so resourceful. And it actually looks as if the link for the tech hubs has been dropped in the chat. So feel free to take a look there if you need additional information. Next, we have Glory. But before that, I'll announce the following three individuals. So we'll have Danielle Cruz, Nalay Ravula, and Anisha Chari. So you all will come after Glory, starting with Danielle. But Glory, if you are here, if you'll unmute your microphone and share your question or comment.
Hello.
Hi.
I have one question. How do we get into the Zoom room classes? Are the teachers going to be giving us Zoom codes every time to get into a class? Or is it just going to be on Schoology?
I think it's my understanding, you know, what's in our book, I'll show it again. What's in this learning plan is a sample. And so what gets specific is the actual lesson plans and the different ways that your teacher is going to reach out to you. So from my perspective, again, at a high level, I think that's a question probably better suited for your teacher as she explains how to use Zoom, if that's what she's using or if she's using Microsoft Teams. And as she explains how you're going to navigate from class to class. You might have one teacher that wants to use a piece of technology and you may have another teacher who wants to do something just a little bit different. And so I don't have an answer for you except for to say that I think that you should ask your teacher. Or, because I know we'll be having, you know, some open houses, some meet and greets, and teachers will be reaching out. And this is to Dr. White's point, where it's really going to take you asking individuals those questions. And the next thought that I have is, that you may have is one, Ms. Atkins. I have the question, but who's the right person to ask? And so sometimes that's half the battle, especially when you open up a dictionary and there's millions of words in it. The problem is sometimes navigating to the right word that you're looking for. And so I give you that as an example, that I do believe that your teacher is going to be the best person to ask that question. And so please feel comfortable asking that question. And also I'll open the floor up to Dr. White or Mr. Tyler if they just want to share their perspectives as well.
Yeah, I can, I can chime in on that as well. All of our teachers will be using Microsoft Teams. That's the platform with Google Meets as the backup. You all through Schoology will have a launch point. And what we mean by a launch point is you won't have to go into Microsoft Teams itself. You can access everything through Schoology. So we're trying to be sure that we streamline everything for you all so it's not have to click around and find this link, go to this link. We try to have it in one spot for you so it's streamlined, so that way you all can access your, your learning as cleanly as possible. So your teachers hopefully will go through what's expected and how you're supposed to operate in the virtual world once we get to that first week and second week of school. And that way you'll be more comfortable on the, in the virtual platform.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up, Danielle. Danielle Cruz, if you are still here, if you can unmute your mic and share your question or comment.
So I have a question about the mental health of students. I know that a lot of students have a lot of adults within the school that they go to for support and for help. Or even they have clubs and organizations that keep them motivated. My question is, what kind of resources are you guys providing to help the mental health of the students?
Fantastic question. You know, for me right now, the social emotional well-being is one. That's number one priority, right? We need to make sure that you are not hungry in preparation for school. We need to make sure you have appropriate shelter. And we need to make sure that emotionally, that you're stable, that you're comfortable. You know, where we are in our world and right here in Henrico County, we're, we're in periods of isolation. It does not feel good. And so it's important to keep talking. It's important to ask questions just like you did. So to answer your question, what is going to be in place? We have guidance counselors in place to assist you. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Parker in one moment. But I want you to know that we have really been looking at training, trauma care for our teachers going through that series. And there are a series of modules that they've been going through to better understand. We're even, I believe, training substitutes. We want to make sure that each of us, including myself taking the training, has enough knowledge to help you. And so with that said, I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Parker.
Yes, hello. Thanks, guys. I'm the director of all of our school counseling programs. So this is a great question. I'm so glad that you asked it. Thank you. This is absolutely, this has been our priority from day one to make sure that we are prepared to help support our students who are experiencing all sorts of different things. We understand that learning in a pandemic is complicated and it is hard. And there are just normal things that are going to be very difficult. So we want to help you guys navigate the normal things, but also be checking on yourselves, be checking on your friends in case there are some more serious things that start to come about. So I want to let you know, I know a lot of times in middle and in high school, we only access our school counselors for things like schedule changes or academic and career planning. But I want you guys to know that your school counselors are licensed, trained counselors, mental health professionals that are working in your buildings. So please, 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 access your school counselors. You will also have a course in Schoology that is your school counseling department. So they'll be sharing all sorts of lessons and resources and things for you within your Schoology course. But they are also available for individual counseling sessions. They are going to be running small counseling groups. So if you have a group of students that you know of that are experiencing the same sort of thing or having the same type of struggle, please reach out because we can group together and really work through this together. So they are handling individual counseling, small group counseling. They are there for you in times of a crisis. If you know of someone who's experiencing a crisis, that is the first person you absolutely can reach out to and they are there to support you. In addition to the school counselors, we do have our school psychologists and our school social workers. That is kind of our school-based mental health team. And in addition to the trainings, they have received a ton of additional training to really help support students in this virtual learning. So we have focused our trauma training and our crisis training to really support students in this virtual world. We know there are all sorts of other things to look out for now that we typically might not see in the classroom that we are going to start to see now and vice versa. So we are ready to really help support. We're going to be looking at prevention. So your school counselors will be doing monthly lessons in all of your classes. So each grade level is going to get monthly prevention lessons. Your teachers are also, every Wednesday is our Wellness Wednesday. So your teachers are also going to be providing you with some social emotional learning as part of prevention. At elementary, middle, and high, we're holding our Wellness Wednesdays. So we're trying to do some prevention. We're trying to give you warning signs, things to look out for within yourselves, within your friends, within your families, and then give you that connection to your school counselor. If you have any concerns, please, please reach out. They are here for you all day, Monday through Friday, ready to go to help our students. So hopefully that answered some of your questions. If you have any more, please reach out to your school counselors. They are ready. Like I said, they are ready to go and to help and support you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Danielle. And thank you, Liz, even for sharing out how prepared we are, you know, for our students around some of those questions and concerns. Next, we have Nalay. Nalay Ravula. If, Nalay, if you're here, if you will unmute your microphone and share your question.
Yeah. My name is Nalay, and I'm going to Moody Middle School as a sixth grader this year. And so I actually have two questions and they're both related. So my first question was, if we have like any technical difficulties during the meeting or before the meeting, who will be, who will we be able to reach out to so we can like fix those difficulties and let them know that we're having them?
Okay. So that's an excellent question, and that certainly is a two parter. So one piece of this is, let's say it's September 8th. You had your breakfast, you're ready to go, you go to log on, laptop doesn't turn on, right? And you're a rising sixth grader, so you're transitioning from a Chromebook to a Dell laptop. And let's say, you know, you thought you were familiar with it, but you're not. It's just not working. One thing I would share for you that's important before you get to September 8th, grab a sheet of paper and make a list of contacts for yourself. Make a list for the tech hub, make a list for your teacher and her phone number or email address, whatever she provides, because you'll get that information ahead of September 8th. And any other contacts that you want to put on there, your guidance counselor is another one. You never know when you're going to need, as Ms. Parker shared. So make yourself a list. Now, let's get back to September 8th and your first day of school and you've opened up your device and it does not work. Your first step would be to contact that teacher and let her know that your, your device is not working and that's why you're not in class, right? The other piece of that is, okay, now how do I get it fixed? Well, that technology hub will assist you with that. And if you make that resource or contact list in advance, you and your parents already have the information to get it fixed. And so I'm excited to share with you. My son's name is Tyson. He attended Ward Elementary School and now he's going to Elko Middle School. We just recently picked up his Dell laptop. It was a seamless experience. And we spent today going in Schoology. And then we went to Clever, and he just thought he knew every single thing in Clever, right? Then we walked away, we had lunch, we came back, and he couldn't remember his dog on login. And mom didn't know his login either, right? But you know what we did have? We had already had that resource list made out and we were able to figure it out. And so I hope, Nalay, that that answers your question. Know that you are not alone. Many rising sixth graders right now are really diving into, man, I went from having maybe one or two classes to now seven or eight classes. So it's important to start playing around in that laptop, going in, looking at your schedule. Print it if you can. If you can't print it, just write it out. All right? I hope that was helpful. Are there any other suggestions, not just from administration, but I'd love to hear thoughts from students as well. Let's get on in here.
Hey, I was just going to say, for sixth grade, it's going to be a lot. But, you know, it's going to get better, I promise. It's going to seem like there's too much coming at you, but all you have to do is pretty much take a breath and just really don't like skip class and do stuff. It's not really worth it. I mean, so many people get in trouble and it's just like, for what? What are you trying to prove? Just listen to your teachers, focus on work, and if you need to take a break, just ask the teacher. Teachers are very nice. I went to Moody Middle School to do a chorus concert and they were so nice. They showed me around the place. But if we do go back to school, it's, Moody Middle School is literally a maze. It's, it's a lot, but just stay focused, keep your mindset as possible. Being an eighth grader is, that's all I have to say.
Remember, you said positivity, so.
Yeah, I know. It's, but, you know, it's, like she said, you got to keep it positive and just think about, you know, I'm going to get through this. So, yeah, that's it.
I love it.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Nalay, for your question. Let me make sure.
Yeah. And, Nalay, I believe you had a, you had a second part to your question?
Yeah. So, like, let's say your teacher or any other person in the school doesn't know that you're having technical difficulties and you weren't able to join the meeting. Would, would they, if they count you like missing, would you be able to like tell them, I had this technical difficulty and I wasn't able to join class? And would they be able to change it?
Such great, mhm. Yeah, and I'm curious.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Cole.
See these delays, right, with technology? I'm curious to hear from some of our principals.
I'm curious to hear from some of our principals and what, what has been discussed with teachers, right? You know, how to handle that, you know, if there is a student who's really trying to join, they haven't been able to, they're having difficulty. What are, what are, what have teachers been told to do if a situation like that happens?
Uh, well, again, I'm speaking from the elementary. This is Mr. Tyler from Bryan Elementary. Um, so if there's a situation where there is an outage and you have to miss the day, you will have an opportunity to make that up. So you, you're counted by completing some work. Um, and, and that, and, and we've also instructed teachers, if students are absent, they're to contact home to find out what's going on. There's something that there was happening. If it was an outage, we'll work with you. That happens. Uh, so yes, it, it will not just be, okay, you missed it, you're out of luck. We're going to be there to help you catch up and, and make sure if it's something that's not your fault, we're, we're going to make sure that you're not counted absent on that one, so.
Okay.
All right. Oh.
And Dr. White, anything else that you'd like to share or does that pretty much?
I think Mr. Tyler, uh, hit it right on the head. And I think the, the biggest piece that we're looking at for this year is being able to exercise some flexibility, some patience and some grace. We understand that, um, our young people will not be able to access, um, everything, which is why you will see your teachers record instructions so that way you can have access to it afterwards. And then you also be able to have the opportunity, if you did have technical difficulties, to be able to reach out to your teacher after you get them solved to let them know what was going on.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I, I, yes, absolutely. I do want to mention, um, it's so important, guys, that we just stay in contact. So please just communicate. Everyone, um, is willing to offer grace and time and really work with you. Your teachers want you to be successful. We want you to be successful. So please, if you're having any issue, as soon as the issue gets resolved, just stay in contact and communicate. And we can absolutely work with you to resolve those, um, challenges. We're, you're on your side and we're on your team and we want this to work. So if you're having any problems at all, just please contact and communicate with your teachers, your school counselors so that they can help support you.
Yes, indeed. Just remaining proactive, right? And so, and Nalay, I can tell that you're a very responsible student. And so if something happens, you know, even if something's wrong with your technology, letting, you know, your parents, your guardian, whoever's in the house know so that they can contact the right people as soon as possible. And something else that really stands out to me is I was listening to Kanaya, just try not to stress about it. You know, we're all doing this. You know, it's new for all of us, whether we're teachers, principals, students, you know, even in my position. And so giving yourself some grace, trying your best not to stress about it, especially the first week or two. Um, but thank you so much for that question and all of the dialogue that came from it. I want to remind everyone, um, and also I got a message from another administrator who's on the call. There may be some opportunities to practice on Thursday and Friday. Not sure if that's at all schools. Contact your school if that's happening, if there are any kind of test runs for getting online and logging on and things of the sort. So again, contact your school community, um, to see if that's happening at your school. I do want to remind you all that if you are interested in asking a question, there is still time to sign up. We have about two more names now. So, um, next up is Anisha Chari, followed by Natalia. And if, again, if you would like to ask a question, feel free to sign up. So Anisha, if you're still with us.
Hello, my name's Anisha and I just wanted to know if we're going to have like separate gifted classes or like gifted classes like in, within the class that you're in?
And I heard a piece of your question. I did not hear all of it. Ms. Cole, did you hear all of the questions? Yeah, so Anisha wants to know if they're going to be essentially separate gifted classes during this virtual learning. It's, it's what I heard. Yeah, I'm not aware of what the schedules are for the gifted programs. I would refer over to, you know, our principals or other staff that are on the call, uh, because I don't know those nitty gritty details on how, um, different programs are going to be implemented. So I'll turn the floor over to administration to answer your question for you, and it's a wonderful question.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So from the, uh, elementary aspect, uh, gifted services will still be given to students who have been identified. Uh, it will be done during the school day. Uh, we have, uh, time either during, uh, reading or we actually have a time for extended learning, uh, from 1:05 to 1:35. And that would be a time that the gifted teacher could meet with gifted students. But, but the services, you will be meeting with your gifted teacher and you will be getting the same wonderful, uh, uh, learning that you had, you've had in the past. So we want to make sure you're still getting that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And I hope that was helpful.
Yes, it was.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Next, we have Natalia. Natalia, are you still here with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Your question or comment?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, um, I came in late to the, um, meeting and I heard that you guys were talking about, um, calling in or something like that if someone was absent. How, how would you guys do that? Because, um, we're going to be moving and we're moving during the week. And I'm not exactly sure when, I'm not exactly sure when, um, when we're moving. So if I would miss part of the class, um, how would I be able to contact like the teachers or the principal to tell them that I would be absent?
So that's a great question. Um, it's also a great question if, you know, you're use, using your device to contact your teacher and let's say you don't have access to internet or your device. Teachers and staff will be reaching out to students to give contact information like phone numbers, uh, mobile numbers. And so outside of sort of web-based, uh, options like email and, and source, virtual conversations, um, teachers will be reaching out to you to give you phone numbers. And so it's going to be important that, you know, whenever you move or when, if you're not able to attend class and receive instruction, just call your teacher and let your teacher or whomever know that you're not going to be available and along with why. And so I think that's a step in the right direction to get you to where you need. It's just so important that you communicate with your teacher ahead of time if you know. But in cases where you don't know, you're getting ready for school and, you know, let's say the laptop isn't charged. That, that may happen. That's real life. Let's say you go into your laptop and your internet is so choppy, it's just not working. So you can't use that as a communication. But you can use your phone, whether your mobile phone or if you have a house phone, to make that phone call to contact someone, your teacher or whomever, and let them know.
Okay. Um, and then also, um, if we finish an assignment early, would, would we, would we be able to submit that? Or would we have to wait until the due date and then submit it at the due date?
That's an excellent question. I think that's a teacher question. Uh, I, because it depends on the assignment. Uh, and so that, I, I would encourage you to ask your teacher because based on whatever that assignment is, it may have a two-parter to it or it may grow in some way or it may just be A-OK. And so therefore, that's a question I would encourage you to ask your teacher.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
My pleasure. And, and before you go away, I always want to open the floor up to Ms. Parker or Dr. White or Mr. Tyler, just in case they have some additional information that they want to share um, regarding completing assignments early. I know I received a question, um, from my own daughter and, and she's an ACA and she does pretty well, uh, with her grades. And she said, well, mom, I can't get my, all of them in one day and I, well, you may not be. So what we need to do is make sure that we talk to our teachers, share our intentions and make sure that we don't move so swiftly that we make a mistake. And so even my own daughter, I'm giving her that advice to talk to the teachers. It could be perfectly fine, but you won't know until you ask the question. And so administrators on the call, what are your thoughts, uh, about that? And you may be on mute.
Yeah, I was, I was with our chime in. It definitely, as you said, Ms. Atkins, it, um, depends on the teacher. So if you work with the teachers, if you communicate, they will let you know what the expectations are for turning in work. A lot of what you're going to notice in a virtual platform will be that feedback aspect. So you don't want to rush to turn something in so quickly that you're not able to get that feedback from your teacher. The feedback piece is going to be the best part of the learning process because it allows you to be able to make corrections and make changes if there are some things that you may not have gotten completely when you were going through that learning aspect.
Thank you, Mr. White.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And good luck with your, with your move, Natalia.
Thank you.
So we have two more speakers, um, Campbell, Jay, and Amira. So Camp, Campbell and Amira. Campbell, we'll take you next. If you'd like to share your question or comment.
Hello, everyone. I'm Campbell. I go to Tuckahoe Middle. I am going to be in eighth grade this year. I'm really excited. Um, I was just going to touch on the mental health. I was wondering, um, a lot of students, when they go to school, you know, you get to be with your friends every day. And I know for me, and I'm sure for a lot of people, it's been really hard not being at school. And I mean, every summer it's hard not being at school, you know, without your friends and stuff like that. Especially this year with virtual learning, especially since we're not doing things like gym and PE and even just being in class and being able to like talk to each other. So like, what is your advice for staying connected, especially for those who like don't have phones or, you know, email? And so how do you stay connected without, you know, school?
That's an excellent question, Campbell. Thanks so much for asking it. And that's why we have Ms. Parker right here with us. I will, I will share with you that, um, some of the things that I do as a mom, um, communication is going to be key. I would say share that with individuals that you trust, um, because there are resources in a myriad of ways. And so for me as a mom, I really am asking my kids, how are you feeling today? Sometimes they are sad and sometimes they are happy. And it is my job to figure out what the levels of happy and sad are so that I can figure out how I can help them. So it is important for you to just share how you're feeling with your parents and, and we may find goofy ways to make you smile. We may do all sorts of things myself. I, I do TikTok videos and then I share them just to make them laugh and smile, even if it is just for that moment because it's hard. And believe it or not, it's not only hard for, uh, you and your peers, it's hard for adults. We want to be with our friends too as well. And so we really do have a, a level of understanding of what that feels like. So you are not alone. That's my key message. You are not alone. So with that said, Ms. Parker, could you also share some, some good advice and tips?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, we want to make sure that you do not feel alone. And that's, you're exactly right. That goes for parents, teachers, and students. And we know that you can feel really isolated sometimes, especially if you're home by yourself on the computer all the time. So a couple of things, um, want to make sure that you are participating in any group discussions that happen with your class online. So if there's a chance for small group work, please go ahead and make sure you're participating in that. It'll just be really good to get to communicate and interact with other friends in your classes. And then also there's opportunities, if you can take them to study with friends virtually, please do that. If you're reading a specific book in class and you want to start a book club online, that's a great idea as well. Um, and even texting your friends throughout the day while, uh, you know, you're having small breaks from learning is a great way to stay connected. It is okay to say, hey, this is really hard. Um, I'm not okay today. How are you? And to have those conversations with your friends, I think is going to be really important. Um, and then don't forget how powerful it is because sometimes we are going to have, we call it, um, meeting fatigue. And it just means that you have been online for so long and you just need a break from the computer. So don't forget to go old school and just pick up your phone and call a friend and talk to them on the telephone. It is so refreshing after being online all day long, um, to get offline and still be able to have that communication and connections. So we also like for, uh, suggest that you kind of schedule some game time with your friends. There are all sorts of different online games and things you can do that are fun and that are safe to do with our friends, um, online. And also even if you can just create group playlists that you and your friends are all contributing to and sharing different music and songs and lyrics and things that you found, um, that can be really, really helpful and help you continue to have that connection with your friends. Um, it, you know, we all love a social media challenge. So a TikTok video or something like that is another great way to stay connected. And then just again, reaching out if you're feeling isolated. Um, we are going to try to continue small groups and clubs and things like that online as much as possible. So there will be opportunities for you to still participate in those things. Um, and then if you are feeling isolated or like you are alone, please, please reach out because there are a lot of ways that we could get you plugged back in and connected with students. So again, lots of opportunities, um, and don't be afraid just to pick up the phone and, and call somebody if you need a break from the online meeting. Um, it's different, but it is going to be really important that you are kind of monitoring if you are getting tired of being online and, and can give yourself that break, that is okay to do as well. So make sure you are checking in with your friends. Absolutely. It is okay not to be okay. We just want you to be communicating that and sharing that with somebody. Um, we are all in this together and we are all going to be feeling that same way.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. I just love the energy here. I feel like everyone's like ideas and opinions are just so valued and it's awesome. Thank you guys so much.
It's, 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 well, if you're feeling lonely, I mean, like, I understand that. Um, I'm, well, I'm an introvert, so you know, I like being alone. But, um, yeah, I, my friend Tiffany, she goes to your school and it's like, I miss her so much. But it's so hard being alone because you've seen these people and some days you're just like, oh my God, I don't want to see your face anymore. But then you're like, wait, I'm in quarantine. I miss these people. You get to the point, I, I don't like where this is going, but you get to the point where you're so ready to be alone at any day. And that's why many people are either like doing stuff just to get in school. And they're trying to see people because nobody likes to be alone except for introverts because we love being alone. But sometimes you just, like Ms. Parker said, you have to pick up the phone, call or I don't know, ask your parents, maybe if you can be like, hey, can we walk over and stay six feet apart and say hi or something? Do a walk? I don't know. Cause I know it's going to get boring, but at this point, I miss, I miss everybody's faces. It could be a stranger. I will miss your face. That's where it's gotten to. So yeah, that's all I have to say.
I'll share another idea, um, that I received, an idea recently, uh, from a student um, that had the same feeling that you guys had. And he said, man, I never thought I'd look forward to something in the mail. And so I did just that. I, I drew a picture of myself and then I stapled my business card, my school board business card to it. And I put it in the mail to that particular student. And I received a phone call and the, first of all, they were just laughing because I am not an artist. It was literally a brown circle, a stick, two arms. And then I already had the bottom part, so I had one other leg to draw. I stapled my card, I mailed it to him. But you know what that did? Um, one, it was a diversion, just to be honest. It was a way to just feel and see something different. But it got that kid to say, oh, wow, there are options. There are some things out here that I, I could try. And so I would share with you, maybe mail your friend and become pen pals. That used to be a thing. And so being a pen pal could be an awesome way to stay connected and it's also something to look forward as well. So that's just a thought for you. Yes. Awesome. I have to say, Kanaya, I'm shocked that you're introverted. And Campbell, I'll have to say that I think the energy we feel is really you all are creating it. So thank you all for being so open and for asking the questions. I won't, I think, um, our expert shared a lot, but the only other thing that I will add to it is, I think with this time is done, I have an only child at home. My daughter's seven and she's a social worker. So we have really had to figure out with the pen pal, right, the writing the letters and really doing some, so maybe talk to your parents about how you're feeling too. If it's possible for you to have some socially distance, you know, sitting in the yard with some of your, your close friends, as, as long as your parents will feel comfortable with it. So just figuring out some of those really creative ways to connect. And I think, um, Mrs. Parker really shared it, um, saying how you feel. I have found myself really remind, I've reminded myself of the people who mean the most. And I've been telling them that because I think,
And I've been telling them that because I think, you know, probably it's taken for granted having access to them so much. So telling individuals how you feel and if you can, get some socially distanced things going on, you know, after school and weekends and things of sorts that you can see your your friends. All right, so we have Amira. Amira is next. And after Amira, we have Elias after after Amira. So Amira, if you're still here with us.
Hello. My name is Ra. Um, I go to Short Pump Middle School and I'm going to seventh grade. Um, I have a couple of questions for you. Am I supposed to only say one or like, is it okay if I have more?
Yeah, it's that it's fine that you have more. You can share them all.
Okay, so I was just wondering, are we going to be on Zoom the full eight hours a day or how is it going to work?
So it's my understanding that Microsoft Teams will be used. However, there will be teachers that perhaps use other applications as they find out what's unique about their class and other options. And so, um, you know, there may be different types of apps that you'll be engaging in in your classroom. The other piece of that, and I want to just address that because I think I heard you say Zoom. But just to prepare that I my expectation really is using that Microsoft, Google Meets and other apps as well. I do not anticipate any student, it's my expectation, that none of our students are looking at a monitor for eight hours. If I knew how to cross-eyed my eyes, I would do that, but it really wouldn't matter because if you guys can see my eyes are really tiny, so it wouldn't even be worth it. But that's how I would feel if I looked at a screen for eight hours. To answer your question, it is not my expectation. I'm for certain it's not Mr. Tyler and Dr. White's expectation for students to look at a screen for eight hours. During your day, you're going to have built-in breaks. And so during those breaks gives you a time to stand, hold your eyes, do whatever it is that you need to do to get away from that screen. Also, there'll be some individuals that need more than just a break that's allotted. You know what? That's all right. Because as we go into this, each individual are going to, will be learning how much they can stand headphones. How much can they visually take on a screen? All of these things will be learned. And if that time comes where you need a break visually, you know, when we're, when our brain is processing the pixels that we are absorbing to identify the vision that we're looking at, or not the vision, but exactly what we're looking at, um, that can be stressful on the eyes. So it's totally okay, um, if you need to step away because you need a break. And that's in addition to the breaks that are also built into the schedule. And I can assure you, and I'm going to let, uh, Mr. Tyler and Dr. White speak on this to convince you even more that we do not want students looking at a screen for eight hours. So Dr. White or Mr. Tyler have any convincing words that that is so true?
Again, but in elementary, it it would be very difficult to sit for six hours and stare at a screen. We do have breaks worked in, uh, for lunch, um, and unfortunately for our middle and high school students, uh, who don't have access to recess, we will have that in elementary, thirty minutes for recess. Uh, but also too, we we've given teachers the ability to to take those mental breaks. And it just might be a situation where get up and jump around for a couple of minutes and and, um, in in to to kind of take notice how the class is doing. Uh, so yes, there'll be plenty of breaks and we understand too that just any person would not be able to stare at a computer screen for a long period of time without breaks. So, um, even as adults, we feel the same way. So yes, there'll be plenty of breaks built in. Don't worry.
And I would also just add that, um, you guys, I would anticipate that the first week or two, we are still trying to figure it out. So I guarantee by the end of the second week, your day and how you're doing things is going to look very, very, very different than it did the first couple of days. We are all trying to figure it out. So give yourself that first week and that first two weeks to figure out what's working best for you and, um, figuring out the technology issues and the time of day and things like that. If going into week three, we're still struggling, that's when it's a great time to really reach out again for some additional support. But it is going to be okay the first couple of weeks that we are all just trying to figure out what works best for us.
Thank you very much. That was really helpful. That actually answered two of my questions, so. Um, my next question is for students who are starting strings this year. Do we have, like, how's it going to work? Do we have to like buy our own instrument and then just do it over Zoom, the class?
Yeah, so so for band or strings or choir, more instruction will be provided from your teachers. I will share with you as a mom, um, I will probably wait before I buy an instrument. I would really find out from the teacher what the expectations are. It could be that you are going to learn the pieces of the instrument and you may not necessarily need the instrument at that time. If you already have that instrument, that's fabulous as well. And so to learn more about what the expectations are, what the needs are regarding your strings class or if you have band or choir, uh, that's something that you will find out, you know, from your teacher specifically. Uh, I I certainly would not want you to, um, buy things that maybe aren't needed at that time. So again, uh, wait, please be patient, uh, and ask your teacher what their expectations are. So hit me with the next question.
Okay, um, are we going to do PE virtually or will we just not attend it at all?
So PE is being done virtually. That's my understanding. Uh, my son, the one that's a sixth grader now going to Elko, has health in PE. And I expect him to participate in health in PE. Now, what exactly does that look like? It could be that your your PE or health teacher asks you to do some jumping jacks. And maybe you do some jumping jacks as a class. Now that that would be really fun, actually. I'd love to see my peers doing jumping jacks together. So it could be something like that to get you moving and you see each other. It could be some work that you have to look into a book for. So that's another one that that I would say you'd have to wait for the expectation from the gym teacher to see exactly what that gym teacher is going to expect. But I do expect that children will still have health in PE because it is possible. And it actually could be so much fun.
Okay, that was actually really helpful. So during tests, will we be required to do like Microsoft Teams or Zoom with the camera on? So the teacher will be sure that we're not cheating or make sure that we are the ones taking the test?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer for you. I think it depends on, one, the type of test that you're taking. I also think it depends upon what the lesson is as well. And so, you know, it really is going to vary from teacher to teacher. So let's say there's a pop quiz. Your teacher may want all of you taking it and she may want to see all of you and then engage in a discussion. Or she may really put her eye to the camera, ta-da, to make sure no one's cheating. So here's the deal. So many questions, um, that really are going to have to be answered by the teacher. Um, now that's coming from your school board rep who is at a high level. Let's hear from our administrators and principals around ethics and possibly how we can make sure that, you know, what are the expectations of teachers and things like, I'd love to hear that as well. And Ms. Parker, I think you can dive in a little bit too to just talk about a little bit about that aspect as well.
Well, I can say at Ryan Elementary, we are still working a lot of those things out. But I can say one of the things you did mention was a great idea is that students, while they take the assessments, they keep their cameras on. And, uh, to ensure that, um, we want our students to do the best. But remember assessments, the purpose of assessments is to see what you know and what you don't know. And we want to make sure that we get those assessments, those results are a true indication of what what you know. And if you don't know something, we can go back and we teach that. So I'm sure what's going to happen is when you, when when your teachers are preparing you for assessments, they're going to give you guidelines and procedures and how to take it. And and it's all going to be a a setup so you're going to, um, have an opportunity to do your best.
Dr. White, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I definitely agree with Mr. Tyler. Uh, the goal will be for all of our students to be able to be successful in the best format and mode that they can. Um, we at Home Springs in particular are really looking at, one, the most secure ways to be able to do it, but then also understanding at times, we may, we may not be able to give traditional tests that we typically would because we're in a virtual platform. And as opposed to getting everybody frustrated and upset about how we want to actually do a test, is there multiple, is there another method that we could use to be able to get the same information, the same data that we want to get without having to give a paper pencil test or requiring students to keep their, uh, their cameras on? Because some instances may may not work out where a kid can turn that camera. So you don't want to penalize a young person for not being able to turn that camera on during an actual test. So, uh, please know that all of your teachers across the county, not just in the East End, are working on the best ways to meet your needs, but to also continue your learning through this process in the best way that we can. So, uh, as Mr. Tyler said, we're still working on those procedures and systems, but you will get more guidance from your teachers as we get more information as to how how we're going to go about it the best way.
Thank you. Thank you all for those responses. Amira, was that it for your questions or did you have another?
I had one last question.
Okay.
Since there will not be a bell that rings for us to go to another class, what what will be there to remind the students or will we just have to organize our schedule and figure it out by ourselves?
So that's a wonderful question. I I have some ideas on that. So one thing that you can do now that you know what your schedule is going to be, uh, if you have access to post-a-board, make yourself a clock. And this is something that Tyson and I just did. We made a clock. And then at the bottom, we listed out all of his classes. And then I bought him a timer. Now, you may be wondering, what's the purpose of that big old clock? It's just a symbol to remind him of his schedule. And that timer is set to go off after each of his classes. And so that's one thing that you can do as an idea, um, to help you learn. And you don't have to wait to use that. If you have access to a timer, if you have a mobile phone, I believe that there's timers on that as well. You can start practicing with your timer. You may be that person that's organized and you might just want to put a timer for your breaks or you may just want to put a timer for breaks and lunch. So all of those are effective ways as you are learning how to learn virtually. Um, another piece of that is, um, I'm going to ask for Ms. Parker on that because when we're talking about organizational skills, it's something for me that was learned. And so it it really will take figuring out which way to organize works best for you. Some of us are auditory, um, I happen to be one, uh, and some of us are visual. You know, if I hear it, I might retain it better than when I see it. And so I tend to repeat myself so that I can remember something. Others need to see it over and over again and then they got it. And so that's important to understand. So as you start hearing different ways to become organized, you can start practicing that now. And guess what? You don't just have to practice it with virtual learning. You can practice that with other aspects of your life. And yes, I said your life as a young person. Well, Ms. Parker, would you share your thoughts in response for that question?
Absolutely. Um, in general, organization is a very, very personal thing. What works for one person may not work for someone else, and that's okay. We're trying on to see what fits us. As you can see, I am a Post-it note organizer and I have hundreds of these all over the place, but that might not work for you. So this is your chance to try out different things and see what does. Um, a quick note, in Google, feel free to go ahead and set up your alerts and your notifications in your Google Calendar. And then that will pop up on your screen when it's time to transition to another class. So that's just a simple way that we can use, um, what's available to us right now if we're looking. You can go ahead in your calendar and plan out for the year, um, the different sections that you have. Once you receive, now that you have your schedule, you can go ahead and do that. And then you'll get notifications, at least for the first few weeks while you're really getting that habit. And you are correct, organization, um, comes naturally for very, very few of us. And for everyone else, it is a skill we have to learn, just like math, science, and reading and everything else. So this is our year to practice and see what works for us virtually. And that might look different once we go back into the buildings as well, and that's okay. So Google Alerts is something that I've learned has been very, very helpful, um, for a lot of students at secondary, at middle and high school. And those notifications pop up and they just remind you that it's time to transition to your next class.
Thank you very much for answering my questions. I hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for those great questions, Amira. I'm, I think you asked some things that others on the call probably was helpful for them to hear too, so thank you. So our last question for the evening is from Elias. Elias, if you're still here, if you'll unmute your mic and share your question or comment.
Yes, thank you. Um, I was asking, I think, um, that this question, a lot of people probably, um, want to know. And this is actually, um, I got this from another question and I wanted to build off of it. Um, so can you, can you use Google, well, not Google, Microsoft Teams to like, um, video, like video call other of your friends so that you can have like some time just to talk, fool around, like, just spend some time instead of talking on the phone, you can use the same computer?
That's an excellent question. You know, I don't know. Um, let's find out if either our principals or Ms. Cole or Ms. Parker knows. And if we don't know, we are going to find out the answer, uh, because I think that's a wonderful suggestion to figure out a way to make sure that we can connect. Um, I know Ms. Parker mentioned that there are going to be clubs. So I would imagine that there are going to be opportunities for you to connect virtually, to see one another through some of those clubs. Maybe it's a book club or some other activity. Uh, and so I I I do think that's going to be possible, but those would be initiated, of course, um, from your school, from Henrico County Public Schools. But having opportunities to do that on your own sort of personally, I don't know the answer to that question. And by the way, I really like your background. So Dr. White or Mr. Tyler, I don't know if you have any insight into that question.
Well, uh, Microsoft Teams serves as just a communication platform for any particular body, anybody that you want to be able to do. Uh, I would definitely encourage you, and I I don't know this information off the top of my head, but I can only imagine that you can create an account and your friends can create accounts, accounts as well to be able to meet on this type of platform. There are also other, uh, virtual spaces that you guys could be, you're able to meet to be able to, like you said, fool around and and meet with each other and talk to each other. And I think it's a great idea that you have it and you want to be able to meet virtually with your friends. So, um, I believe you can use Microsoft Teams, uh, this way, but I'm not sure if you're able to do it with your HTTPS student account. So, but again, the platform itself can be used to be able to meet, just like Zooms, uh, Zoom can be able to be, uh, meet Google Meets as well. So there are many other platforms that could be used for you to be able to meet your friends in a very, a very similar platform like we're doing right now.
And while I know that, I know that we are still trying to, we are still making sure that we understand all of the functions and capability of Teams in the different types of devices we're using. So it might look a little different on the Chromebooks or in elementary than it does in secondary or in high school. Um, so even if you can't call someone through Teams, you could certainly be able to then create a link on a meeting link and then share that with your friends so that you can all join that meeting link together. So there might not be the function for you to call them directly. Um, but there would be then the function for you to work with your families to create that link and then they could join that link if they were interested.
Okay. Well, thank you. Have a good evening. I think that cleared up my question. Um, I think that, um, this school year is going to be interesting. And hopefully it doesn't end up, um, being too bad. and hopefully it doesn't end up, um, being too bad. I have a lot of good vibes for this. Um, and I hope this school year turns out really, really nice.
Oh, that was wonderful to hear and I will tell you, we wish nothing but the best for you and all of our students. I'm gonna, I've been, uh, copying Dr. White's. He's been saying, we got your back. Um, I've been copying that and I'll say, we got your back. We want you to be successful because the truth is, if you're not successful, then we're not successful. So we are in this. I'm super excited. I need to stop smiling so hard because my cheeks are starting to hurt. But to see your faces is so refreshing. And for you to see other, your peers on this, on this, um, virtual meeting, whether they're at your school or not, it's refreshing to see. And so I'm so grateful, um, for you and for everyone and all the students that are participating. Thank you so much.
Yes. Yeah, I think you, you are, um, segueing into a great summary, Mrs. Atkins. Um, I feel like I'm cheesing too, you know? I'm just so excited to see all of the young people on the call. Um, you know, first I'll say thank you to our school board member, Mrs. Atkins, for being here in the evening and making sure that it was an evening time. So it was a bit of flexibility for our young people. Also to, um, Dr. White, to Mrs. Parker and to Mr. Tyler. Thank you all for being here and being present on this evening and being so receptive to answering the questions of our students. And to our students, you know, a few words, I just wrote down a few words as you all were talking to reflect on the evening. Um, bright, eager, responsible, thoughtful, engaged, positive, present and ready, right? As, as much as we have to figure out, I'm leaving this call feeling as though our students are ready. They're ready because they've given thought to what's to come. They're thinking through the next steps and they want to be prepared. And so for me, that's being ready. And so I'm leaving the call feeling really excited about what's to come. I'm looking forward to September eighth and everything else that comes after it. You know, I hope that you all, all remain in touch. You know, I, I remember some of your names because you all were, I loved it, a group of talkers. So much insight was given here. And so we're really hoping that you all have an amazing start to your school year. And also another just big shout out to our school board members who really wanted to have the student town halls. I don't think, I don't think this will be the last time that we'll do it because we know how important it is that we hear from our community. So I just say a big thank you all for being here. Um, and again, we are excited and ready to get back to school and let's all stay ready and have some fun while doing it. So thank you all so much and have a great rest of your evening.
Um, so, um, I also had another, um, request, oh, sorry, another question.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, um, if, if, do you, if you think you can and if you mind, do you think you could put your school email inside of the chat? Uh, so if we have, if we have any further questions, we can ask you.
Sure. Absolutely. And so you're asking myself and maybe some of the other administrators on the call to drop our emails in the chat?
Yeah. Yes, please. If you, if you can.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll do that now. Um, yeah, we'll do that now. That's a great question. And, and please know, we'd love to hear from students. We'd love to hear from you, even if it's just giving us an update on how things are going. And so I see some, some have started to drop output mines in there now too. And thank you for that comment, Nalay.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Alrighty. Well, thank you all for being with us for an hour and a half. I think it was really worthwhile time. Have a great evening, a great rest of the week and an amazing start to next week as we kick off back to school.
Fantastic. Enjoy your evening.